Good evening, and we're going to start our May 15th, 2020. Carol, Carol, we're starting. We're opening the meeting of the May 15th, 2025, for the special permit application for 3537 Interlake and Road. A few announcements, we have town meeting on Monday, the 19th at 6:30. We also have the Memorial Day flyer is on the web town website. So you can look at the times. So we would appreciate that everyone is courteous as we deliberate tonight. And I thank you all in advance. So tonight we are here and I'm going to make. I move that the select board vote to approve the special permit application for 3537 Interlake and Road under section point six, 6.6, and the associated relief applied for under section 6.1, subject to the set of conditions reviewed by the select board at its May 15th meeting and the evidence presented at the public hearings. And with a final decision to be completed by town council prior to filing with the town clerk. Do I have a second?
Second.
So now we can open to discuss?
We haven't voted yet.
I know, we can discuss, I said.
But subject to what conditions, we need to discuss conditions.
We can do that now.
Okay, so why did the motion include subject conditions from two days ago?
Because I had, that's how.
This is my ignorance of the process, I'm not challenging.
Christopher's on the, and he helped write the motion. And the conditions went with the opening and then we can discuss now. That opens it up so we can discuss.
So this doesn't limit us to modifying the conditions?
We can, we can discuss and we can talk to Christopher and Donna, but we cannot talk with the public.
I just want confirmation that we can modify the conditions as presented by town council.
You may ask, Christopher.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that motion was, it could authorize the decision with the conditions that we prepared, but it would certainly allow Patrick for discussion and modification of those conditions that we shared with the board. So I regard it, all of those conditions is open for discussion, supplementation, addition to removal deletions. They're open for discussion amongst the board.
Yeah.
Hi, hi, Patrick.
Hi Chuck. So, one by one?
I would actually like to start with number 20 because I think it has a material typo in it. I wanted to just get clarification, maybe I misunderstood what we talked about. But condition number 20 says, oh no, I'm sorry, it's condition number. Wait, that's theirs. Sorry, there's a lot to look at here.
Yeah, that one's better.
This one's ours. Yeah, it says hotel residences may not be rented for transient rental of 30 consecutive days or fewer. And I believe that that is in exactly the reverse of what we're looking for, which was hotel residences may not be rented for transient rental of 30 consecutive days or longer.
Right.
31 days or longer, we should say, because the law is 30 days on the short term rentals.
So it's a typo.
So Christopher, can you address that?
We want to, we want to capture what the board intended. And it certainly seems to me that we may have, we may have.
We had talked about.
Yeah, but maybe they typed it.
I think, I think that's, I'll concede that that's a typo on our part. If it should be no more than 30 days, then we can change that.
Okay, no more than 30 days.
Any other one?
Just one, maybe 14, maybe add national holidays to.
Oh, right.
Which, holidays anyways, but at least we'd be in.
Writing.
In writing.
Which one was that? I missed that.
Number 14, where exterior construction hours of operations shall be limited to 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday. National construction will take place on Sunday and they had national holidays.
Got it.
State holidays, I think we should get off Flag Day or whatever it is. What's that one for Americans?
Patriots.
Patriots Day, that's, yeah, okay.
I work great through seasons, that holiday. That's all I got.
There was a comma in one, but I think that's just a. All right.
Unsurprisingly, I have a number. I think that before we get to the specifics, I just want to think about kind of a larger decision. And maybe we have a conversation around that. You know, there's, 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 first of all, there was a number of exchanges this week related to water. And I don't know if you want to introduce into the record the comments from both David Booth, who was the PhD geologist, or Michael Penous and Michael Baphoni about the water system. Did you guys have a chance to review that today?
Yeah.
Of course, I've called Michael.
Yeah, and I don't know if, because there was so much in that, I don't know if we want to include that somehow in the record, because I think that was a concern a lot of people voiced.
All these materials get entered into the record? Is that what you were asking?
Well, I'm asking that, you know, the memo, the email from Michael was in the record so far. Neither is the one from David Booth, it was just an exchange on. I mean, it's only one paragraph from, from the geologist. And he wrote, it has some ingredients for karst limestone and marble formation, but there are no dolines, sinkholes, springs, et cetera. I have not observed any of these features in my time in the field there. In fact, our view of the drilling completion reports from private wells in the area suggests that the marble is very low permeability and not a productive aquifer showing no signs of karstification. And then Michael Baphoni, I won't bore you with it, but Michael Baphoni did an extensive analysis for us today talking about how much, how much Lake Abrik holds and what our yield is and, and, and what the anticipated amount of water that would be drawn from this project and it's nowhere near what our professionals estimate as the, as the, as the maximum, as the maximum yield. So I just thought it was important because so many folks were talking about this.
I'll make a motion again into the records.
Okay, thank you. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Look, my, my take is that obviously this is a, a, kind of a challenging decision. And that, you know, this board has to weigh a lot of different factors in town. I, I can't, I'm not suggesting I was the only one because I don't know what, what, we don't talk outside the meetings, but I spent a lot of time this week looking at this issue around water use and am comfortable that it was answered both by credentialed subject matter experts and our own team that's been in place for decades. So I just wanted to say that. As I think about the larger opportunities and challenges the town faces, I don't think that we can make this decision in a vacuum. I think that when we look, for example, at conservation, we have, we have had for a long time a desire and a goal to take that big wide gap of over 200 acres that separates the restrictions we have on the, to the south and north of the mountain and fill that gap. And that has been a goal of mine really since the first meeting when we talked about it. I personally focus a lot of my time on town budget issues. And for years, you know, I've said, you know, we should know what's coming. And, and I think there's two things that have influenced where I'm going to go with my comments and, and my likely vote, which has to do with the two big budget busting opportunities and challenges the town faces. One is the excellent work that Chuck and Vinnie and Michael and, and everyone did around the new 24 hour, seven day, 365 fire plant. But let's recognize that just the labor and operation on that is around a million dollars a year and the carrying cost on the building is around $350,000 a year. Now you guys pay around nine and a half million dollars a year in taxes. The rest of the budget is kind of add-ons from other people. All right, so the first thing I just want to point out is that in a town where the average age in the state is 39 years old and in this town, the average age is pushing 65, that having four, five or six minute response with that ambulance service is really important, but how do we pay for it? Okay, the second thing I would point out is that the other end of the age spectrum is a new high school. I spent three years on the regional school district planning board for that merger. Now that didn't pass, but I learned a whole lot about the schools back then. And the, the one statistic that blew me away was that 50% of the kids in South County don't go to college or finish college. 50% of the kids don't go to college or finish college. 50% of them just have a high school education. And if we can pull off vocational in South County, the way that McCann did 50 years ago, and over the next several decades build that up, it gives an entire career path to folks who otherwise might not be encouraged to stay here or might not ever be able to own a home or do some of the things that, that come with an education in the trades. But that decision though, has come down, the price of schools come down and they're voting right upstairs right now on how to do that vote in November. But that decision is going to cost this town about a million and a half bucks a year in the carrying cost of that note. All right, now I'm not suggesting to you how you vote on either of those two issues. They're going to come up, but what I'm suggesting is that I've seen in other towns where there's been strong debate over what people can afford. I don't think anybody's against a nice shiny new high school. And I don't think anybody's against better ambulance response time, but the question comes down to what we can afford. And I spent some time this week doing an analysis of potential tax revenues on this project. And, and there's a lot of, you know, I have obviously not seen the applicant's business plan, but the tax revenues from this project come down to two areas. One is property tax residence revenues from the single family homes and the duplexes and the hotel residences. And the other is the occupancy tax and meals tax revenues, which it is my understanding the state is about to bump from six to seven percent if we want to adopt it and three quarters of a percent to one percent on meals tax. Where I came, kind of my best guess of this business plan is that this will generate somewhere between two and a half and four million dollars in revenue for the town. A lot of it depends on pricing and, and how the applicant positions it in terms of, you know, whether it's modestly high end or high end. It's probably out of the purchase, probably out of the affordability for a lot of the people in this room, including me. But depending upon how it gets positioned, that two and after four million dollars largely pays for the two projects I just outlined. And I just wanted to say that I think that we have, we have, we have to consider sort of how we do the things that we may want to do. And that's, that's going to weigh heavily on my decision tonight. So that was my little spiel. And I wanted to now just talk about a couple of conditions that I think are really important, partly based on personal experience and partly based on, on, on what I saw in the, in the, in these four hearings that we've had so far. First is a minor condition, but you know, this area of the project, the CR, I recognize that there may be some low impact human activity here, but I am unconvinced that it should be sort of blanketed for recreation. So for example, I would like to add a condition that there are no motorized vehicles going up the mountain. I don't want to see trikes or bikes or, you know, anything that has a, a gas engine roaring up and down the mountain and getting onto the, the, you know, the high, the high road trail. I think this is, you know, it's just not something that I think is appropriate for what is basically the, the conservation area. So I wanted to get your guys' feedback on that.
Can you legally run motorized vehicles on conservation privately?
Yeah, sure, you can do any, the conservation restrictions are amazingly flexible and we're going to get to the conservation restriction in a minute. But the first of all was, I thought that, that I just, I just thought for that portion, you want to do something down there, it's fine, but for that portion, I don't want to see motorized vehicles.
And Christopher, can we add additional conditions? And if so, do we need to make a motion to do so?
So you are certainly, you are fully able to add more conditions in addition to the ones that we prepared and circulated. That is perfectly fine to, to add them. The board can, I'll defer to the chair. I think you can handle Patrick's proposed conditions in one of two ways. You can discuss it amongst yourself and, you know, come to some consensus just in your discussion, or you can put it to a vote and that would, that would certainly make a, make a clear record. But I think you can, you can, you can, you can agree amongst yourselves or you can put it to a vote. I think each, either one is equally fine.
What if you, I agree with that, but what is situation for maintenance purposes? So if they had to go up.
No motorized recreational vehicles.
Recreational, so you know, if they have to go up.
Yeah, that's fine, I said it's recreational in my note.
That's fine.
No motorized recreational vehicles.
Okay, so that's number 31.
Okay, now, this one is going to be, I got for me done already. This is, this one's personal to me. All right, you know, I was humming along in my 30s and early 40s and I got lymphoma. And lymphoma is caused by glyphosate, which is an exfoliant. And I feel very, very strongly that we should ban pesticides in the CR area for a couple of reasons, not only because we have too much poison in this world already, but I think that also we frankly, you know, you talk about, the applicant talked about ticks at the last meeting, a possum can eat 2,000 ticks a day. And I don't want to basically, this is, this is for nature, this part's for nature. We, the whole idea of this, as I understand it, my philosophy on this was to concentrate the development in the lower portion of the property and we leave the rest of it for, you know, a trail up to the hill or for the high road, but we leave it to nature. And I don't want, I don't want widespread spraying in the, in the, in the CR area. And, and would strongly prefer based on my book, my personal experience, that cost me five years of my life between lost work and then getting back on my feet and getting, getting, starting a new career. And it's an awful thing to go through. And over and over again, in, in, in our society, we have seen with the billions and billion, tens of billions of dollars of lawsuits around glyphosate, how this causes cancer. And I don't want an exfoliant up there, period. And I'll tell you another thing, that is glyphosate is banned in Europe. I used to teach seminars before I got cancer. I went to about 250 places around the world to some of these high end resorts. And it has been banned in Europe at these kind of high end resorts for well over a decade. All right, you can run a resort without spraying exfoliants or glyphosate. You can do it, they do it all over Europe now, you know? And, and so I would like to, at the very least, see no pesticides or at least no exfoliants or other glyphosate or similar types of chemicals up the mountain. I don't want to see tick spraying, I don't want to see, I don't want to see pesticides going up the mountain.
What was in here? Yeah.
Damn, you just said.
Well, it's no pesticides or herbicides may be applied within 200 feet of any wetland or anywhere within the conservation restriction area. Isn't that what you're asking? Number 22, right here. On five. I think that's what you're asking.
Right.
Didn't we do that one? I thought we.
But that's, that was different than what the applicant asked for. The applicant asked us for to just do 100 feet.
So if I could, if I could just comment, we, when Donna and I were working on a proposed set of conditions, we took some of the applicant's suggestions, we, we included the some, we disregarded others. And we overall tried to capture some of the board's comments from the prior session of the hearing on Tuesday night. So I think Donna and I recalled that there was some discussion of 200 feet of any wetland. But if we, but I understand that the applicant may think that 100 was agreed to. So if we, if 200 feet is incorrect, well, I'll certainly defer to the board about what you want to see.
I'm fine with that, yeah, actually, you know.
I think this is.
That was my, my error, I didn't see, there's so many versions of it, I didn't, I didn't see that.
I thought he had to put it in.
Okay, good, that's. So then the last thing I wanted to review is the, the, I would like to review the, for the, I understand that, that, I would like to just review some of the terms of the CR that I would like to see incorporated into the conditions. And I don't believe, unless you have it from the last, the last meeting, I just wanted to read, read the language that, that I had prepared last weekend.
Cause there's, cause there's number six too.
Right, but number, the conservation restriction number.
Six A and B.
Very right.
In the, in the newer printed one, six A and B.
Right, okay. Shall be in a form approved by town council and must be recorded prior to issuance of the first certificate of occupancy. Any building residential unit or component used within the project. Basically, there's nothing in the, in the conditions that dictate what the CR is. You can carve out new buildings in a CR, you can carve out a development area. This has, this in my mind is something that we kind of need to agree what's going on up there. And so the prohibited uses I came up with, there's basically two sections of a CR that are material. The prohibited action uses and the permitted action uses. All right, now, now I, I have, you know, the originally the, the abracadabra was an oval that went this way and the applicant did extend the CR area by 12 acres based on between the third and the fourth. That was great, so the shape of the abracadabra has changed. So this kind of area would be open for the recreational activities that we have. Obviously, they would have to come back for a special permit if they want to build something in there, which, which I guess protects us. I am fine with that. But up here, I just wanted to kind of review the, the limits that the CR for the 220 acres would need to, to contain. So you wouldn't be able to build permanent or temporary structures, for example. And all this is in language that Donna has, Donna and Chris have. No buildings, period, no landing strips, mobile homes, swimming pools. Basically, standard language in there. No, no extractive activities. The important thing there is logging. In addition, the other ones, mining, excavating, dredging, withdrawing or removing soil. But the one that I added in was logging, we cannot log in the side of the mountain. And I don't know if you want to talk about these as I go through them or you want to just talk about them at the end.
Talk, finish, why don't you finish?
Motor vehicles, no subdivision, you know, basically that's mostly a standard. Those are the, those are the two on the, on the, on the prohibited activities. We're basically saying, you know, we're not logging the mountain and we're, we're not doing the motorized vehicles and we're not spraying it for pesticides and we're not, and we're not building any buildings up there. Right, and is that okay with you guys? All right, and the permitted uses, they're permitted to vegetation management. They're permitted to remove non-native, non-native or nuisance species similar to how we do it at Gold Meadows, which is in a, in a non pesticide way. They're, they're allowed to, you know, if there's habitat issues, they have to do it. They're allowed to do trail maintenance. So if there is a trail that goes up to the top, they're allowed to maintain the trail with, with permission of the Concom, they would be able to add a trail, which might be necessary if there, it doesn't exist now. And, 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 and the trail features would be similar to, I think, what is already in the, in the language of the CR that we have or in the language of the permit that we have. I believe that that's it. So there's really nothing terrible there other than, okay, good.
Standard.
Okay.
Don't you think?
And that was basically the, you know, I, you know, I think that maybe my suggestion, Jamie, would be to perhaps read the conditions into the record, you know, that, that we've come up with so that everyone can see. There's a lot more conditions in here that I think we already agree on, that, you know.
If I can suggest, Madam Chair, if the board is, is okay with those additions, we can, before this, you know, we produced the final version of a, of a, of an approval, we can summarize the permitted and prohibited activities in sort of new subsections, maybe C and D of condition number six.
Thank you. So do you.
You want Chris to walk through the conditions, maybe?
Chris, is it necessary for us to read them all through?
It is not necessary for you to read them all through. I think what's important is the board members, it, the, what's important for purposes of arriving a decision is the board members have digested the proposed set of conditions and can discuss them and, you know, weigh in on them. Not legally necessary to read them all through, we can, we can, if you want to, that is certainly also appropriate. And if you'd like me to quickly go through them, that is also appropriate.
I feel like the public should have an, an understanding or at least an indication of what they are.
Christopher, can you read through them, please?
Sure.
Got already money tonight.
No, I'm not going to, what I guess what I'm suggesting is I'm not reading the conditions. I'm, I'm summarizing each one briefly. Is that, is that appropriate?
Yes.
Okay, condition number one provides that all proposed buildings shall have a maximum gross floor area not to exceed 37,110 square feet. This condition is intended to ensure compliance with section 6.6.3D, which we discussed the other night, by keeping any new buildings or additions below the gross floor area of the existing mansion. Condition number two, and this is going to require some additional supplementing after tonight, but what condition number two basically does is list all of the most recent site plans and application materials submitted by the applicant and says that that's what the applicant gets to build. And that's only what the applicant gets to build. However, then condition two, in addition to those approved site plans, goes on to say that to the extent the applicant needs to reconfigure or adjust the massing of their proposed buildings in order to comply with condition one, which is again to have buildings smaller than 37,000 square feet, there, they will have some ability to modify their site plans in order to accomplish that. Condition three says that the permitted uses on the property are hotel, resort with accessory amenities like conference, retreat facilities, residences and agricultural and open space. It goes on to say that there are permitted no more than 23 single family homes and four townhomes and provides that the applicant may elect to convert the four townhomes into four single family homes instead, which would I think bring the total number up to 27 single family homes on the property. The condition four says that the hotel resort shall include a maximum of six hotel suites and a maximum of 133 hotel residential units. I want to just flag that one because I, we had, we had drafted that condition to say that there will be a maximum of six hotel suites. I believe the applicant may understand that it had requested nine. So if, so six is what the permit will say if we go with our set of conditions, but I understand that there may be some factual disagreement about what, what they were seeking on the applicant's side. So I, and I confess, I don't, I don't, I don't recall the answer myself other than that we thought it was six when we were doing the drafting. So if the board is inclined to think that it was nine hotel suites rather than six.
It's nine. I thought it was seven.
My reaction is what happened is that they had said six and I had made a typo. In fact, that is nine and they proposed six, but you know, but it could be, you know, I could be wrong.
Okay, so what, so does the board have a consensus as to what it thinks the number ought to be? Or should I, should be deferred until for a moment what that, what the appropriate number should be?
Chuck?
I would always agree on it was a six.
I think that I, I personally have no problem with a couple of more rooms in a hotel, so, you know.
Okay.
I mean, it's.
Of mine.
No, Patrick said it was a typo.
Right, I'm just saying that, you know, because it made it into the applicant's condition, suggested conditions at nine, and I'm just saying I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. It should be nine?
The ninth.
Nine.
Okay, got it. Next part of condition four says that there will, the hotel resort can contain dining and drinking facilities with a maximum capacity of blank seats.
It was 150, wasn't it?
It was 150 and then they said 100 more.
250, was it?
Yeah, it was 250.
250.
That was what my notes from Tuesday night said.
Yeah, 250.
Okay. Then, uh, condition four says hotel amenities, uh, such as, but not limited to pools, athletic and recreational facilities, landscaping and outdoor gathering areas. So that's condition four.
All right, but let's be clear though, that I, I, I do believe that condition, and that's condition three, not four, by the way. Is that I, I do believe that those should, the, the, the in-ground stuff, the plan is for that to all be, you know, east of the well on, isn't that correct? Yeah, we talked about the agri hood and the outdoor dinners and the kind of, you know, putting in pools and tennis courts. It was not envisioned west of, west of the, the wetland.
I could, I could add a sentence.
It was in the picture in the middle? The two swimming pools?
Yeah, they were in the middle of the whole complex.
Yeah, they're, they're here. But, you know, my point is that this is sort of the agri hood is for like the glamping or the, you know, growing some vegetables or, you know, having the horse barn, but it's not for swimming pools.
Well, the pools are in the middle.
So my point is on three, that, um, you know, that building new pools or athletic or recreational facilities, you know, uh, should be, should be, you know.
That's four.
I'm looking at that, it says three.
Four?
Four. Hotel amenities such as, and then the pools, let's kick no car games.
Yeah, but the, the numbers, I, I, I.
Oh, you're not talking, I'm playing this.
Oh, no, it's, it's four dot three. Four dot three.
Oh.
Three and four. Number three in the four.
So I can do one of two things for that, Patrick. I can say either all of the in-ground stuff shall be located east of the wetland, or I can say that all of the in-ground, uh, improvements will be located as shown, you know, no further, uh, west of their depiction on the most recent site plan.
Okay, good.
Okay, just writing that down. Okay, um, condition five, no portion of the project shall exceed the height of the existing mansion. I think that's self-explanatory. Condition six, we talked about it some length, I think already, that's the condition that requires 220 plus acres shall be subject to a conservation restriction as depicted on the open space plan. And we will supplement condition six with the enumerated prohibitions and permissions, uh, included in Patrick's draft.
Yeah, I personally don't see how you up that steep slope, which is like 20 or 30 degrees, how you do horse drawing carriages or hay rides without like, you know, the people falling out the back, but if you want to leave it, that's fine with me.
Okay. Uh, condition seven is.
You know what I'm saying, it's like, yeah.
Condition seven is the condition intended to specifically protect the portion of the site between the front of the mansion and the street. And it says that, um, there should be no development or new structures of any kind between the front of the mansion and the road. They showed that, that area shall be preserved and maintained. And it shall really be preserved and maintained as of the date of, uh, this special permit. I understand that the applicant, uh, is a little concerned that there may be something shown on the site plan that that condition, as we drafted it, hasn't accounted for. So I, I guess I'd suggest that condition seven, as you're looking at it, uh, that we just add a sentence that says, you know, if anything is shown on the most recent site plan in that area, that would be acceptable.
Yep, yeah.
All right, just writing that down. Okay, uh, eight, another, another important one. Condition eight says that the existing mansion shall be restored as follows. Uh, the applicant shall follow the five-step architectural process outlined in its submission of April 28th, 2025. At a minimum, they shall do the following, uh, things, including preserving and restoring the front side of the structure and 50% of the two side facades. Preserve and or replicate the front roofline and chimneys and preserve and reuse interior architectural, architectural elements to the extent practicable in the common areas of the mansion. Now, that's the substantive requirement for what they need to preserve. We also then go on to say that, um, no other construction or use authorized by this special permit may commence in any form until satisfactory completion of the restoration required herein has been completed. And the building commissioner has provided written confirmation of such completion to the select board. That as condition, that part of the condition as we drafted it was meant to make it virtually impossible for the applicant to do work on any other portion of this project. Until they have satisfactorily completed the restoration work of the mansion. I understand the applicant to have some concerns about that because that would foreclose their ability to generate revenue, uh, from the project and the property until the restoration is fully complete. But we did draft this condition intentionally to be, uh, fairly inflexible and to guarantee to the full extent we could, we could, that the restoration work comes first. So I will, I know the public hearing is closed. Uh, I'll share that the applicant, I understand to be concerned with the inability to do work on other parts of the project, but that is how we drafted it and that's how we drafted it, um, you know, by design. So.
The restaurant, though, I have no problem with the work concurrent for the mansion also applying to the restaurant. So you basically have like the, you know, the small hotel and the restaurant could proceed concurrently so that when they open, they've got food and dining, you know, you've got, you know, uh, rooms and dining. I don't have any problem with doing the restaurant in conjunction with the mansion. Just not the, the rest of it. I think we're in it for preservation.
Isn't the restaurant in the mansion?
There's one in there, but isn't there one also behind it?
Yeah.
The restaurant is directly behind the mansion, so, you know, it seems to me like those two, and the barn is a renovation project. I don't even mind if you put the barn in there too. Because that's, that's an existing structure.
So two restaurants and a barn can be, can be worked.
The existing structures can all be renovated at the same time, you know?
Okay. Are the other two members okay with that?
Yeah, definitely.
Cause I thought we had already talked about that the other day.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I do have a problem though with one word in this.
Sure.
Which is, I'm now looking for, um. Under number nine, the first phase of construction shall include restoration of the mansion and installation of the landscape. I think that should be, shall be, and then with the modification we just made. The first phase of construction shall be restoration of the, of the mansions and other existing buildings, however you want to phrase it. But not include, include suggests it can include other things.
That's a good, that's a good correction.
That's going to be the first phase of construction, so, what was I going to say?
Shall be.
So right.
Yeah, I was thinking another word, that was better, but I came up with it again, I lost it.
Yeah, I mean, I think you get the sentiment, Chris, right, how you.
No, I think, I, I think that's a good, that's a good, um, that's.
Consistent, consistent, whatever, yes, something like that.
Okay, I can do that. Condition 10 says prior to commencement of construction of each phase, the applicant shall provide the following construction documents to the select board and building commissioner, which is full construction drawings, building elevations, floor plans, et cetera. Um, that's just intended to, um, you know, elicit a, a, a more detailed set of, set of drawings as they go from one phase to another.
I, I think, I guess on that one, I would prefer, say, the town administrator and the building commissioner, that this, 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 if, this, this falls into the, do we have discretion? And so we're not going to be voting on this stuff because we have to vote on everything before, so why is it going to us? I mean, then, you know, I'm just asking.
No, no, I think it's correct. You're not, this is not, this is not intended to be any sort of, um, discretionary yes or no on whether they can proceed to the next stage. It's, it's, it's more of an administrative review as to whether the draw. Comply with this permit. And I think you're, it's a fair point that those don't need to come directly to you. And as a practical matter, I'm sure that the town administrator will be, um, happy to share them with you, so.
He has, he has paid more than us.
Yeah, that, uh.
Not much, a little bit.
Just a titch.
I will make that change. Eleven is just prior to commencement of a construction, the applicant will obtain a stormwater management, uh, permit. As we've discussed, I think throughout the hearing, that, um, level of review will be required prior to commencement of each phase. Although notable here that the stormwater review will proceed in phases, um, as they go from one phase to another, as the permit is currently drafted. Let 12 is related. It says that they will provide a stormwater pollution and prevention plan and construction traffic management plan. 13 is sort of a spoiler plate standard condition in most big construction permits. And this just says that there's going to be a pre-construction meeting with, uh, everybody relevant in town before the construction begins. 14 is hours of operation. We've already talked about adding holidays to this one, which we will do. 15 requires construction materials and equipment to be done in a way that is, uh, as far away from practicable as from the abutting property lines. 16 is just before, uh, issuance of COs for a particular phase. The engineer has got to do basically a certification that they've constructed that phase, uh, in accordance with the plans and permit. Uh, 17 requires a final as-built plan. Again, that's a standard boilerplate in most big construction permits. 18, uh, says that the applicant will make a donation of, uh, 25,000 for each of the 23 single family residences to be constructed on the property. 19 is a little unusual. It says that if there is no appeal of this or other permits needed for this project, the applicant will make a supplemental donation to the town.
I think I should say successful appeals.
Uh, well, the, the idea here is that if the app, I think, I think, I believe the idea here is, and this is not one that.
I don't remember this one.
No, this is one that was not discussed. I don't believe it was volunteered entirely by the applicant. It's not one that we, the board pushed, not one that town council pushed for. It is, I think the idea here is that the, if, if the applicant is not required to undertake the expense of defending an appeal, it is willing to provide some of the expense, so some of what that cost would have been to the town as a community benefit payment. This has been volunteered entirely by the applicant and it's again, this is not one that we've.
Okay.
Pushed for.
No, it was sort of like they were a gift.
It is essentially a gift in the event that they are not, uh, required to undertake defending this permit in the form of an appeal.
Okay, thank you.
Provided on a voluntary basis and not, not, not extracted by the board or, or council. 20 is the limit.
We talked about.
We just, we talked about that one.
We will fix that. 21 governs tree removal, um, and requires that for every tree removed on the front of the property, uh, with a diameter of, uh, five inches or, or greater, uh, they will plant replacement trees, uh, in accordance with the condition. 22 is pest, no pesticides or herbicides. We talked about that one. 23 says outdoor, outdoor lighting shall be designed to ensure that no light spill occurs onto adjoining properties. 24 says no sound amplification for outdoor events. 25 is an interesting one, I will say. This 25 says the applicant shall comply with all applicable noise laws and bylaws. In addition to that, I, we drafted the condition to say that no use or activity on the property shall produce any sound level greater than 7 dB A or 10, 7, 70 dB A or 10 dB A above ambient sound levels as measured from the property line. Whichever is less, um, excepting, uh, delivery vehicles, regular motor vehicles, service vehicles and sort of, uh, maintenance of the grounds. Now, this is one that I understand the applicant is a little concerned with. We, Patrick had originally suggested a noise condition. And the noise condition that Patrick suggested, suggested that we not allow noise greater than 70 dB A or set 10 dB A above ambient, uh, as measured over, as averaged out over an eight-hour period. My concern with that one, and this one is coming, I think mostly from me, is that when you average sound out over any window of time, but particularly a longer window of time, like an hour or two hours or eight hours, you're unlikely to get a reading that is terribly, uh, loud, even if there has been intermittent noise over that period that is quite loud. So I think, you know, when measuring noise, I think you can be, you can look at it over long periods of time or you can look at it on, on a much shorter basis. And it's really, to my mind, the shorter bursts of noise that are likely to be most, uh, disturbing to people on the property or the abutters or people in the general neighborhood. So when I drafted this, when we drafted this condition to say, uh, any sound level greater than 70 dB A or 10 dB A above ambient, um, you know, that was intended to be pretty restrictive. Because that any means, means any. So I don't have a, and so I don't want to negotiate against myself. We drafted that condition. It's pretty rigorous, um, and I know that the applicant is concerned that, you know, if there's one noise, one time, that might subject them to noise enforcement. I don't think that's likely to be true as a practical matter. But again, there's, we don't, we have not had a meeting of the minds with the applicant on this condition. Just wanted to flag that for the board. But again, this was intended to be pretty strict, um, figuring that they have a lot of land to work with and there really is no reason why there ought to be noise, um, of concern to the neighbors at any particular property line. That's 25. 26 talks about bundled packages shall include line item billing of food. That's intended to make sure we capture meals and occupancy taxes. Condition 27 says excess produce, um, which shall be 5% of all produce at a minimum shall be offered as donations to the Stockbridge Farmers Market, uh, food pantries or other distribution networks. I understand from the night discussion two nights ago that the applicant is, uh, accept, accepts the idea that excess produce will be, uh, donated. I think they're, they're a little concerned, as I understand it, that 5% is a difficult mark. 5% of all produce may be difficult to actually measure, but I think that's likely something that can be worked out.
It's, it's, it's aspirational and I would, I would actually like a modification of that, which is, um, after Stockbridge Farmers Market to, to add, uh, you know, Stockbridge, you know, um, uh, affordable housing locations, or something to that effect. Before we provide food out of town, I would like to provide food to people who need in town. And, and in fact, today I was at an event where, where, um, a small church in Great Berdton had just six of the little greenagers growing areas. And, and members of the congregation actually harvested it once a week in the summer and bring it to the food pantry over there. And some of the only sources of fresh produce they have. And especially frankly, if there's going to be growing year round in greenhouses, it's a great opportunity to share the wealth with folks who have less in town. So I'd like to kind of put our local affordable housing locations, you know, kind of, it just inserted between farmers market. you know, kind of, it just inserted between farmers market and local food pantries.
I can do that. Do, are we wedded to which at a minimum shall be five percent of all produce, or can we, can 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 I squeeze in some language that's meant uh, that to suggest that that's an aspirational, uh, average to be met over time?
Look, basically, if you're going to chuck food, I would rather have them get it to folks who want to eat. And so, you know, I mean, I I don't have any idea if if excess produce is one out of twenty, you know, eggplants or, you know, carrots, or if it's one out of ten, I would just hope that the applicant would recognize the kind of benefit to the community of, you know, if there's extra food, we share it.
Do we need a percentage? Can we just?
Can we just say excess?
Yeah. Because if you get a bad growing year, five percent could hurt the restaurant.
But it would be.
If you get like now rains every day, production's going to be way down. You get a season, you might have, you know, twenty percent going out the door.
Yeah, I was just saying.
I'll take the five percent out.
If it, my only point is that even in a bad growing year, nineteen out of twenty of the carrots would go to the restaurant, and one out of the twenty carrots would go to our hundred and twenty people, or a hundred and twenty units we have for an affordable housing, and I don't think it's unreasonable to say we've got a floor. So, you know, if you don't want to do it, it's fine.
It's fine, either way. I mean, it's just.
I'll make it a target, not a, not a, I'll make it a, 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 a target, a target to be met over time, not a, not a.
Yeah, that's right. It's all season. And say, or more, add an or more at the end of it, you know, encourage.
Yeah, okay. I can do that.
Twenty-eight.
Uh, twenty-eight is the applicant shall provide a bond or letter of credit and outside of factory, the superintendents of the water and sewer departments to ensure completion of water and sewer infrastructure for the project. Um, twenty-nine is the project will include solar panels and avoid the use of fossil fuels to the extent practicable, and thirty fireworks are prohibited. I know that, um, Donna and I put twenty-nine and thirty in the permit, but there was some discussion as to whether or not the board had uh, agreed to take those out at the last meeting. We may have not, and I'll defer to the board on whether twenty-nine and thirty ought to be in there.
I think for thirty, we had talked about that if people, like Tanglewood or Wheatley had, when they had fireworks, I think they come to the fire chief and to select board to get a permit, and I could be wrong.
I thought that.
I thought we took that out.
Yeah.
No, I, but.
What do you want?
I.
I would like to take it out, and I think we should work on a fireworks bylaw this summer for the whole town.
That would ban them? Chris, I have a question. Is there a way to ban fireworks in town, uh, and accept exempt July fourth and, uh, Tanglewood on parade? Because if we can't do that, then I kind of want them out. If we can do that legally, like with a carve-out for tradition, then I, then I, then I, then I don't have any problem taking them.
Uh, I don't, I I I guess I want to punt on that one, Patrick. I think it sounds like it's a bylaw that a town can certainly adopt. I've never worked on one myself, so there may be something I'm not considering. I would say that if there are concerns about, if the board has concerns about fireworks on this property, it does no harm at all to say that it either can't happen or that it can't happen except um, with, you know, um.
Are fireworks a zoning bylaw?
Well, it's 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 interesting. Fireworks are, I would not ordinarily think fireworks should be regulated through zoning. The, I suspect your zoning bylaws says nothing about fireworks. However, when you are approving a, you know, a important project and a mix of uses on an important piece of property and land that has, uh, that has neighbors on multiple sides and is expected to be doing entertaining in the summer and spring and fall. You know, if if we think this is something that this hotel resort use might want to do, and we don't think that's a good idea, I would have no real problem having, legal problem, having the board include condition thirty and saying no fireworks. If they got a problem with that later on down the road, they can always come back.
The reason I'm asking if it's a zoning bylaw is it is it's subject to a zoning freeze at the day of the.
No, I think you, no, if you're, if you're adopting the bylaw, the new bylaw that you were just discussing, that would be a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw.
That would be up to the town, I guess.
But again, if you, it's, to me, it's a question of whether you want to fireworks not to happen at this property. If you want fireworks not to happen at this property, uh, you are fully legally able to include condition thirty. It's up to you.
I just feel like you have a conservation restriction that extends from, basically from Tanglewood all the way to the Mass Pike and beyond. And, uh, and and it's so disruptive to all that wildlife, and we're basically introducing this rather rather large parcel of activity.
What? I got the wishy-washy way.
All right.
And I think we should address this.
And we'll, we'll also, to be fair to the applicant, we'll address this to the whole town.
Yep. Yes.
And what about twenty-nine?
I don't have a problem.
And it says, you know, to extent practicable, so, you know, if it's not practicable, it's fine, but I I think aspirationally, we should be very focused on renewable energy.
Okay, thirty-one.
One, two, one.
Yeah.
What's that?
No motorized recreational vehicles. And then thirty-two is in the CR, the prohibited and non-prohibited, the six A, B, and C. So Christopher, do I make the motion again, or do we just vote?
I would, um, let me see if I can pull up the motion. I would make the, uh, I would, I would make the mo-, I would revise, make the motion again, and with a revision to just note that, uh, that it's the condition, what what you're voting are the conditions that were included in, uh, distributed to the board in advance of the meeting tonight and as modified by the discussion, uh, this evening.
Okay. Okay, so I move.
I'd like to say something first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Um, so this is, was a very difficult process and a lot of time. And we listened to everybody. After those meetings, I made phone calls, followed up on things that the public made, did a lot of research to get the right answers. Um, this board did very well with it. Um, I think Jamie did an excellent job running these meetings.
I agree.
Um, the two-minute timelab is standard for pretty much every meeting. Last meeting, we had even second, third rounds. Uh, we took everybody's advice into this. We could, but we got our legal ends to do, and I think it was a very productive and, uh, informative meetings, and it's tough to make the decision now. But I want to thank you and thank you and move forward.
Thank you, Chuck. All right, here we go. I move that the select board vote to approve this special permit application for thirty-five, thirty-seven Interlake Road under section six point six, and the associated relief applied for under section six point one, subject to the set of conditions included and modified reviewed by the select board at its May fifteenth and meeting, and the evidence presented at the public hearings, and with a final decision to be completed by town council prior to filing with the town clerk. They have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi, Patrick.
Hi, Chuck.
Hi, Jamie. So, um, our next select board meeting will be June sixth, two thousand twenty-five at six thirty. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
Can we make some questions or comments?
No.
No.
Done. Pat, I.
Jerry?
The city.
Yeah, we did.